What is it?
Oh, it's one, it's 1:58. You have to wait, right?
Pause, please.
I'm gonna go ahead and convene, my apologies for that false start. Convene this hearing of the Committee on Higher Education and Technology, 2:00 PM, February 15, 2023, Room 309 at the State Capitol. My name is Amy Prusso, currently serving as Chair. And in the room with us, we also have Vice Chair Janine Capella. We're gonna go through some guidelines in terms of how we conduct the hearing, and I'm gonna ask Vice Chair Capella to provide an overview.
Thank you, Chair. In order to allow for as many people to testify as possible, there will be a two-minute time limit per testifier. Please keep yourself muted and your video off if you're joining us in Zoom land while you're waiting to testify and after your testimony is complete. The Zoom chat function will only allow you to chat with technical staff, so please use that for technical issues only. If you are disconnected unexpectedly, you may attempt to rejoin the meeting. If disconnected while presenting testimony, you may be allowed to continue if time permits. Please note that the House is not responsible for any bad internet connections on the testifier's end. And in the event of a network failure, it may be necessary to reschedule the hearing or schedule a meeting for decision-making. In that case, an appropriate notice will be posted. Please refrain from any profanity or uncivil behavior. Such behavior may be grounds for removal from the hearing without the ability to rejoin. Back to you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you so much. To accommodate some of our testifiers, I'm gonna go ahead and take measures out of order, and I'm just going to move HB 875, HD1, to the top of the agenda. This measure would establish and appropriate funds for the Hawaii Teacher Apprenticeship Program to support, recruit, develop, and retain teachers for Hawaii's public schools. It would establish the Hawaii Teacher Apprenticeship Program Special Fund. And first up to testify, we have Nathan Marata, University of Hawaii, in support, in person.
Chair Prusso, Vice Chair Capella, members of the committee. Nathan Marata, Dean, College of Education, UH Manoa. We stand in support in our written testimony and available for comments, questions.
Thank you so much. Next to testify, we have Stephen Schatz, Hawaii P-20 Partnerships for Education, in support, in person.
Aloha, Chair Prusso, Vice Chair Capella, and members of the committee. Stephen Schatz from Hawaii P-20 Partnerships for Education. We support this measure. We're excited about the prospect of really creating a ladder where students can pursue their educational advancement in the teaching field while gaining experience at the various levels of employment.
Thank you so much. Next to testify, we have Keith Hayashi, Superintendent, Department of Education, in support, in person.
Good afternoon, Chair Prusso, Vice Chair Capella, and members of the committee. Sean Bacon, speaking on behalf of the Department of Education. We stand on our written testimony in support of this measure and are available for any comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Also here to testify, I believe, in person, we have Felicia Villalobas, Hawaii Teacher Standards Board, in support. She might not be here. Next, we have Mitsihiga HSTA, in support, in person.
Hi, Mitsihiga, speaking for President Osatui Jr., HSTA President. We are, I'm standing in strong support on our testimony. We look forward to this opportunity. This is a great, we could finally pull federal funds down to support our teachers who are doing student teaching in an apprenticeship program. This is an opportunity. We've got to take it. We are here in support. Let's strengthen our pipeline. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And we also have testimony from Louis Alaveria, from the, from Department of Budget and Finance, providing comments, and one individual, Cheryl, providing testimony in support. Members, are there any questions? Oh, I apologize. There was one late testifier, David Donaldson, from the National Center for Grow Your Own, in support on Zoom.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is David Donaldson of the National Center for Grow Your Own. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that supports states and school districts to launch grow-your-own and/or registered apprenticeships and teaching. Previously, I served as the Chief of Human Capital for the Tennessee Department of Education, and while there, was the lead author for the K-12 teacher occupation to be approved by the U.S. Department of Labor to be eligible for registered apprenticeship. So with that, we are really excited about the potential of this bill. We fully support it and are available for any questions that may come up from this committee. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Seeing no other testifiers, members, are there any questions? I, I would like to start us off with a question for Mr. Donaldson. So could you please explain to the committee a bit more about how it is that we would be able to draw down federal funds related to vocational education around a teacher apprenticeship program? And why that, why this shift that's happened in the past year or so is such a profound change?
Sure. So thank you for the question. I appreciate it. So 85 years ago, the National Apprenticeship Act was created, thus creating registered apprenticeships. What occurred with the U.S. Department of Labor approving the teacher occupation to now be eligible is that the same money that historically has been used to train people to become welders or work in IT or the culinary arts can, for the first time ever, be used to pay for folks to become teachers. Similar to how, and I know Hawaii is a state education agency and a local education agency, but in other places across the mainland of the United States, state education agencies pass through over 80% of their dollars to local education agencies. And that is how school districts get their budgets. Now, U.S. Department of Labor provides funding to states and states through their, either their governor or Department of Labor and workforce or labor and industry pass through money to what are known as regional workforce boards where funds can be accessed. So now, a program that gets registered for apprenticeship would potentially be able to access funding at their regional level, their state level, and the federal level. Two things of note that I just want to make sure I get across. The U.S. Department of Labor has previewed the upcoming grant coming out next month for statewide expansion grants for apprenticeships. These are purely formula grants. That means if Hawaii applies, they will receive a grant. We are encouraging members in our community to include the teacher occupation in there. And separately, at the end of August, Dr. Jill Biden, our First Lady, announced that there would be a $100 million grant opportunity coming through the U.S. Department of Labor. It will be a competitive grant, and it will be prioritizing the teacher occupation. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Members, are there any other questions? Seeing none, thank you. We're gonna move on to the next measure, and we're gonna go back to the top of the agenda. So back to HB 371, Vice Chair Capella. Oh, yes.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Thank you, members. Moving on to HB 371. Up first, we have DCCA Jamie Shu, in support, in person. If I said your last name wrong, I apologize.
No, Shu is fine. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Jamie Shu. I'm the Acting Cable Administrator of the Cable Television Division, and the department stands on its written testimony in support and available if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Bert Lum, DVA, in support, in person.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Bert Lum. I'm the State Broadband Coordinator here on behalf of Chris Sarriassu, our Director. And I stand in, we stand in support of this bill. And of course, thanks for the opportunity to testify as well as, if you have any questions, I'm, I'm always available for any questions or any answers that I can have to your questions. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your testimony. Up next, we have Rebecca Lieberman, Charter Communications, in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Rebecca Lieberman, Director of Government Affairs for Charter Communications, known as our brand Spectrum. We stand in strong support of this bill. It repeals a reporting requirement. This requirement is based on the FCC's Form 477 report. The FCC actually sunsetted that report last year and replaced it with a new report. And this new report called the Broadband Data Map is a publicly available report on the address level. So instead of now reporting our census block data to just DCCA, we're reporting individual location data to the FCC, which is then being published publicly. So not just DCCA or other state agencies can see it, but the FCC can see it, the state government can see it, and individuals can see data on where broadband is available. So the idea is that this, repealing this reporting requirement follows suit with what the FCC has done because the data is all publicly available now. And I'm available for any questions. I'll offer the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Up next, we have Janine Sukie, Hawaiian Telecom, in support, in person.
Aloha, Chair, and Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Janine Sukie with Hawaiian Telecom. We stand in strong support of this bill. Just to add on my, my colleague's comments earlier, the data that is being required of broadband service providers to be reported to DCCA is, is, is data that is no longer useful because that data requires those reports to be on the census from just like city blocks to very large areas, some remote areas spanning like hundreds of square miles. And so that, the data is no longer, is, is not as granular and as accurate as the data that is now being reported in the federal broadband map, which, as Rebecca mentioned, is publicly available for federal agencies, states, and others to access online today. And that data is, is being continuously updated. We have another update of the map due in March 1st. So for, for those reasons, we support your, your, we ask for your support of this bill and available for any questions if you have.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Also, I have Jeremy Crandall, CTIA, in support. And that's all I have on the testifiers list. Is there anyone else in person or on Zoom wanting to testify? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? No? Okay, moving on. HB 258. Up first, we have Calbert Young, University of Hawaii, in support, in person.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair, Chair. So the university stands on its testimony in support for this measure. The University of Hawaii has a long history, about five years' worth of working with the landowner to pursue this acquisition of this property that is adjacent to the University of Hawaii Manoa campus. That being said, I did put in our testimony, there are a number of points that the legislature should be aware of for the record. This is, this would be a private transaction sale, and the university has been pursuing it as a private transaction. It is currently in escrow to a non-governmental buyer and assuming that the transaction, for whatever reason, may fall out of escrow. The university does think it's a good idea for the state and the university to pursue acquisition of this property, and it's also good for the community in the neighborhood of Manoa. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Kurt Otoguro, DOE, with comments.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Chair, and members of the committee. Kurt Otoguro, Deputy Superintendent, testifying on behalf of the department and Superintendent Hayashi. Department also stands on its written testimony in support. We offered comments. It's a rare opportunity for the state to acquire this 11-acre property. It's ready-made for classrooms. It could be retrofitted for offices. It has a dormitory. It has a kitchen. It has a preschool. It has a swimming pool. It's, it's ready-made. It needs care and feeding. The department was hopeful that the acquisition could come to the Department of Education, but nevertheless, any agency that can acquire this property in Manoa is, is gonna benefit all of us in the state. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much for your testimony. That's all I have on my testifiers list. Is there anyone else wishing to provide testimony? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? Representative Mariachi?
Yeah, DOE, please. You know, I was a little confused by your testimony because you, you said that it's a very rare opportunity to get to acquire a turnkey K-12 campus, which, which I agree. But then later, then you go on to say that you can relocate operations currently scattered throughout the island of Oahu. It does not sound like you want to use this campus for a school. So why, why is it important that you're buying a K-12 campus if you're gonna be using it for office space? That doesn't seem to match with me.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that. The opportunity to acquire first, as Mr. Young said, there's already interested buyers. There's a component that, that you need an educational component on that campus for whoever's gonna buy it. With regard to Department of Education, once it's acquired, there are different avenues that the department could take to establish another school, although we have two elementary schools in Manoa already. And so possibly, some of the classrooms could be retrofitted for office spaces where we currently lease office space. There are certain facilities that we're paying in excess of a million dollars a year for that, and that could be offset through purchase. There's a preschool there that we could probably work with the school facilities authority to see if we could have them occupy that. So it, we're not predisposed to just running a school. It's a school property that has a lot of amenities to it. There's also a gym and fields and things like that that other schools could leverage, right? Not every school has a gym. Not every school has a field. So we're looking at more as a multipurpose, not just a single school. It could be a regional type of usage, especially in the gym area. So that, yeah, thanks for clarifying that. So the department's not predisposed to just running another school there and having three in, in, in Manoa.
Okay, yeah, I just don't think it fits what you're trying to do with it. And if you need office space, I mean, we have a lot of other schools. We're talking about doing teacher housing and things on schools. That's not just, you can build an office building too. I mean, I understand the concern about a high lease, a lease rent, and, and wanting to defer, you know, kind of get rid of that. But why buy a K-12 campus for office space too? That, that just doesn't make sense to me. And if you do want facilities for other schools to use, I don't understand why we're putting it in Manoa, which is one of the better-off communities that we've got. I mean, I, I feel like this, I feel like the resources are being put in the wrong place. But thank you for your comments.
So just to clarify, though, your testimony was offered as an alternative pathway, correct? So this measure actually is to support the University of Hawaii purchasing this property?
Yes.
We would actually have to have a title change?
Right.
There'd be all kinds of problems with this measure if we...
The department believes this is, the department believes this is good for the state.
They would like to also buy it. They're signaling a bid.
Internal bidding war right now. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. VP Young? Thank you very much for your testimony. And I think that along the line of questioning, the DOE has, it looks like multiple potential plans. Can you explain a little bit more of what you envision the university being able to do with this property?
So actually, the university's been pursuing this property since it was first put on the market back in 2018. The plan for the university was working with the community to develop faculty housing. There's a number of issues with the particular property that has community concerns. One is access. The access to this property is not through UH, although a lot of people may think that because when the school, St. Francis School, operated, they had utilized and had a right of access that has since expired and lapsed and was only granted to the, to St. Francis as a school. The actual access is in the valley on a substandard, non-dedicated road. And the property is actually zoned residential. So there's entitlement issues that the school was grandfathered in. The university acquiring actually makes a lot more sense because working with the community, we identified that one of the issues, the university wouldn't need to utilize the access through the valley. So that alleviates a lot of problems and complaints that the neighborhood had with traffic flow through a substandard street. The other one is that by locating faculty housing closer to campus, we actually take a lot of traffic off of the road because those people effectively work and live on campus. And then there's the entitlement issues, boundaries. This is an adjacent property to the University of Hawaii that goes back literally pre-statehood. So there are encroachment issues. A lot of that would be satisfied or wouldn't be as significant if the university acquired it and pursued development. Back in 2018, 19, the legislature did appropriate revenue bond authority for the university to pursue this acquisition, again privately. And the university did put in an offer to the seller. And we also had a private investment partner put in a separate offer. Neither of those were accepted by the seller. And this property has been in escrow a number of times with other potential buyers that they did select. So that's the reason why I'm saying, you know, it would be, it would make sense for the university above all other purchasers, including, with all due respect, the DOE. It makes the most sense for the university to acquire it for university purposes because that's what I mean when I say it's good for the community. We've worked with a number of community partners in Manoa on this as an attractive site. It serves a number of community purposes as well. That being said, again, this is, this is not a bill for condemnation. And it's, you know, this, there's nothing to, there's no legal authority to compel the sellers to sell it to the university or to the Department of Education or State of Hawaii for that matter. So the bill I would view as preemptive, maybe strategically so. But still, yet, this would be, this would be an ideal property to acquire for the state. It would help for housing in the broader, you know, taking, taking and being able to develop housing for the state would help alleviate some housing shortages in open market as well. You know, the Manoa urban center is no, no, you know, exclusion from that. So there, it does make some sense. But again, this would be, we would have to try and pursue and negotiate with the private sellers.
Thank you. Oh, yes.
Calbert, so you say it's in escrow currently?
Yes.
How long has it been in escrow? How many days approximately?
So I have, we, we have spoken with the representative for the seller about two and a half weeks ago, and our indications from them was that it had recently, so probably within the last month, two months, I would imagine, it has been in escrow.
And are, is the seller accepting backup offers?
So our understanding is that other, other than the list, the solicitation back in 2018, all proposals, and there was a, there was a list of proposals that they did receive, there hasn't been any new listing for transactions. So I assume they are continuing to work through the list of offers that they got with the original solicitation. But by my informal count, it's, it, there's been at least two other times it's been in escrow.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Members, any other questions? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to SB 874, which would establish a collective bargaining unit for graduate assistants employed by the University of Hawaii and community college system. First up to testify, we have Deborah Halbert, University of Hawaii, with comments, in person.
Well done. Always a challenge. Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair. This is Debbie Halbert, representing the University of Hawaii. We stand on our written testimony with no opinion on this. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Next, we have DHA Director Brenna Hashimoro, in opposition, in person.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Brenna Hashimoto. I'm actually here in my capacity as the chief negotiator, and we provided written testimony in opposition to this measure, and I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next, we have Candace Park, Deputy Attorney General, providing comments via Zoom. Not via Zoom.
Hi, sorry, I'm here. Just Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, just want to point out that it's not necessary to cite to the Constitution. The Section 1 that is in HD1...
Oh, we saw that, yes.
Okay, can end that statewide concern.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Sure. So a technical correction?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Next, we have Louis Salaveria, Department of Budget and Finance, with comments in person.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have Christian Fern, UHPA in support in person. Not Christian.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair. Debbie Hartman, standing in for Christian Fern, University of Hawaii Professional Assembly. We stand in, we stand on our testimony in support of the right to collectively bargain. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Mitsihiga, HSTA in person, in support.
Mitsihiga, speaking for Osatui Jr., President of Hawaii State Teachers Association. We stand in support. Other states have their UH grad assistant or their grad assistants in collective bargaining units. We need ours there, too. We need to, they have a right as workers to be represented. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Kavenna Kapahua, Academic Labor United, in support in person.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, representatives on the committee. My name is Kavenna Ulo Kala Kapahua. I'm the Chair of Academic Labor United. We're the collective unionization group seeking legal recognition for our union at the University of Hawaii at Manoa. We represent 1,500 graduate assistants at both Hilo and Manoa campuses. Graduate assistants work in many different roles at the university, including providing education to undergraduates by teaching classes, offering and conducting vital research at the university that continues to see the University of Hawaii named in the top 1% of research institutions worldwide, including groundbreaking research being done at UH in the Cancer Research Center, as well as the ongoing water testing, the Red Hill Water samples. And this is work that's being done by our graduate assistants, primarily by graduate assistants, that cannot necessarily be done by other institutions in the state. And then other graduate assistants, like myself, also work in administrative offices and run key facilities like student support services, such as the Hawaii Student Services, the Center on Disability Services, and other offices that make sure education is accessible to as many people in Hawaii as possible. Basically, these are vital workers for the university to have, and without them, the university would operate at significantly less capacity or no capacity at all because I'm not sure they could even open their doors without us. Supporting graduate assistants at UH in unionizing would dramatically improve the quality of education, not only for, or the quality of the university, not only for graduate assistants in terms of workplace conditions, but also education island or in the islands in general. Many undergraduates may take the same classes from graduate assistants, or different classes, sorry, from graduate assistants multiple times as GAs are employed for numerous years. Some, in some departments, students may take a number of classes from those same graduate assistants teaching until they graduate, and then even if they go on into graduate courses. And many undergraduates can attest to the benefit that GAs are to their education. The combination of stagnant wages well below the minimum cost of living, zero job security, and absence of basic benefits make the University of Hawaii uncompetitive as a workplace for graduate assistants. And so it would help the university and education of Hawaii as a whole in order to, you know, beef up these protections for these workers and attract workers to these positions. And we're available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next, we have Shauna Kawakami, ILWU, in support in person. Or Benton.
Hi, Benton Run for Chris West and ILWU, standing on written testimony in support and available for questions.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Galoyu, Stonewall Caucus of the Democratic Party, in support on Zoom.
Not present on Zoom.
Okay, moving on, Louis Salaveria in support on Zoom.
Also not available on Zoom.
Okay. Next, we have Henry Severino Osborne in support on Zoom.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to testify here. My name is Henry Osborne. I'm a GA, graduate assistant, and a PhD student at UH Manoa. I support HB 874 because I want to secure the right for myself and for the 1,500 other GAs at UH to a collective bargaining unit. I specialize in research on the languages of Polynesia and Oceania. And I came to UH because of the strength of this linguistics program. We were in 2022 rated number 32 in the world for linguistics and number 12 in the US. It's one of the strongest programs in the country for linguistics and probably the strongest in the world for Polynesian linguistics. However, knowing what I know now, after being a graduate assistant here for a few years, I would have a very hard time recommending UH as a school for PhD students because of our lack of labor protections, our very low wages, and, you know, many, many other issues that could be somewhat alleviated with a bargaining unit. How can I really recommend UH when there are schools in places like California and elsewhere in the country that provide a similar standard of teaching, a similar standard of employment, but with much higher wages and collective bargaining? One thing that I think comes up a lot that I would like to dispuse some observers of is the idea that because these are necessarily finite work assignments, that collective bargaining is unnecessary. Most PhD students are here for a term of four to seven years, right? And the average employment length in the US right now is about five years. So these are long-term employment opportunities. They do have an end date, but we would not deny somebody in, let's say, a teachers' union from access to their union just because they had only been working there for four years. You know, we're locked in 40 to 60 hours a week between work and school, and we deserve collective bargaining. We do essential work for the university. This university is very dear to me. This department is very dear to me. But I can't in good conscience recommend incoming PhD students to attend UH Manoa, knowing the level of support that we receive at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Neil Tupas in support on Zoom. I think that you might be muted.
Oh, sorry about that. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Neil Tupas, and I support BLHB 874. Graduate assistants should have the right to collectively bargain and form a union if they choose to. Sincerely, I don't understand how the graduate assistant at UH does not have the right to collectively bargain if the majority of them chooses to. And that is why we are here today. Currently, current laws doesn't give them the right to form a union, a right that other workers are entitled to. If that is true, that is a great injustice committed to the graduate assistants. It's not fair, it's not fair for them to be treated this way and not have the same rights and protection as other workers. I was talking to one of the graduate assistants, Deanna Deauna, and she was telling me how it is to be a graduate assistant. She said it's not a requirement for graduation to be a graduate assistant, meaning it's not part of their curriculum. And I thought, hey, that's just like my wife last year. My wife was working at her job as an accountant while studying for her MBA. Her job as an accountant has no connection as a requirement for her MBA studies, the same as the graduate assistants. Their job, teaching classes, creating syllabus, giving tests, and correcting them is totally separate from their studies. The only difference they have, the only difference why they choose to become graduate assistants is the convenience, the convenient that since they are studying at the university, they might as well take a job in the university because they are already there. They don't have to travel and waste time, waste any time commuting or to their place of work. I am working right now, and I plan to go back to school next year once I get all my applications submitted. It's not a requirement for me to continue working when I start my semester, but I will have to because it would be impossible to study without working. I still have to pay for my tuition fees, and also I have to pay for my food. It's no different from the graduate assistants. And if my class schedule won't permit it, I might just take a job as a graduate assistant because I'm already in the campus, and it's just easier and makes more sense that way. In conclusion, being a graduate assistant is no different from any other job. They provide a service, they work, and they get paid for it. Being a graduate assistant shouldn't have, should have the same rights and protection as any other job, and I don't see a reason why they wouldn't or shouldn't have that same right that other workers are entitled to. That is why the graduate assistant should have the right to collectively bargain and form a union if they choose to. Thank you very much for the chance to testify.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next, we have Leif Salvason, individual in support in person.
Aloha all. My name's Leif Salvason. I'm a graduate assistant, well, a teaching assistant at the University of Hawaii. I'm speaking rather obviously in support of HB 874 to secure the right for all 1,500 graduate assistants in the UH system to collectively bargain. One of the primary goals of our union, or rather, when we get our union, is an improved grievance process. Our current workplace abuse reporting system is ineffective, designed to protect faculty and administration while brushing aside harms done to students. This has impacted me personally and many other people I know. I reported a UH faculty member for harassment in the fall semester of 2021. I was not alone in filing a grievance against this individual. I was one of three people that reported this person in the same semester. This person's face reports in the past as well, going back at least a decade. There were no repercussions for this person's behavior, and there have not been. This is in part because of the deeply convoluted and rather hostile reporting system at UH. Our union would work hard to ensure that all graduate assistants, and by extension, all students, would have avenues for justice and avenues for a safe learning and working environment. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we have Megan Harden in support in person.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for this chance to provide testimony in support of this bill. My name is Megan Harden, and I'm a PhD candidate in the Department of Geography and Environment here at UH Manoa. I'm just going to briefly expand on one point that I made in my written testimony. So over the last three years, I've been responsible for designing and delivering course curricula to more than 1,000 students in my capacity as both a teaching assistant and a lecturer. Many of these students have decided themselves that they would like to go on to pursue grad studies, which is really exciting and something that we should all be celebrating. It shows that they are invested in their education and continuing that. It shows that what we teach in the classroom is valuable, and it shows, especially for those who are applying to UH, it shows that they're interested in remaining part of this intellectual community in the state of Hawaii. However, when my students come to me for advice on their application process or seeking letters of recommendation, I have an ethical obligation to make sure that they know what they're getting into, which in reality is a very precarious situation for most of us who work as GAs and TAs. We live in one of the most expensive cities and states in the country, yet we don't have basic workers' rights in terms of collective bargaining. It's genuinely really heartbreaking to have to tell these brilliant and often dedicated students that they should be looking elsewhere outside of Hawaii for graduate school. But again, it's really tough to survive in a setting that simultaneously undervalues and exploits our labor. I hope that those of you in this room can continue to push forward this legislation so that we can support current students like myself, as well as the future graduate students at the University of Hawaii. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we have Jason Mark Alexander in support in person.
My name is Jason Mark Alexander. I'm currently a PhD student in sociology, and I'm also a graduate assistant in sociology. Standing in my written testimony, I would like to highlight two points. One is about the dual role of being a graduate student and a graduate assistant. So to be a graduate assistant, you have to be eligible by being in good academic standing in a master's or PhD program. And that is one connection, but the other connection, the other direction, is that when you are working as a graduate assistant to live and survive, you do receive a tuition waiver, which is available to all staff at the university and faculty, and is a severely beneficial subsidiary on getting education because otherwise, attending the university and paying for tuition and other fees would not be logistically feasible for the majority of students. And not having any direct avenues to protect this compensation, even minimal as it is, is setting up a great system of inequity for many students who are financially constrained and also have to work multiple jobs in order to provide for dependents and other reasons of health and commitments that, as we are often in 30, 40-year-old positions of trying to make a career in life in this state and contribute to the communities around us, not having avenues to resolve issues and protect even minimal aspects of the deal between being a student and being a worker, not having that negotiating right is severe oversight from my sociological perspective. And considering the United, sorry, the University of Hawaii's stance on this issue, as I've talked with multiple administration members, including deans, and seen communications from President Lasner, it's been a severe frustration for me to feel the lack of initiative to take into account the workforce on campus, as I noted in my testimony about the strategic plans framing of 2023 to 2029. There's no initiative to have accountability and open just, respectful dialogue with workers in the campus system unless there is this establishment of a separate bargaining unit from the others for this significantly striving, optimistic, but jaded workforce. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. That is all the testimony we have in person or on Zoom. We have about 60, sorry, about 54 additional individuals providing testimony in support. And are there any other community members in the, would you like to come forward and provide testimony, please?
Apologies. I thought that maybe I was a little late in submitting my request for in-person testimony. Chair Perusa, Vice Chair Capella, committee members, thank you for the opportunity to testify in strong support of this bill. My name is Alex Miller. I'm a former graduate assistant and Chair of Academic Labor United. You already heard a lot of the most important reasons, I think, why to support this bill, but because I'm old and out of the university now, I wanted to just take a chance to provide some historical and legal context in case you're interested. And specifically, I wanted to talk about this primarily students doctrine, which is the main reason that graduate assistants have been denied the right to unionize across the United States, both and in Hawaii. And this doctrine was cited. It started in the 60s, and it was the basis for the decision in 1972 to exclude graduate assistants from collective bargaining rights in the state here. And all of those decisions, to my knowledge, Hawaii is the only place, only agency, the HLRB is the only agency in the United States that still enshrines this doctrine in public bargaining, in public labor law. So all of those other decisions previously that this was decided on in Hawaii have been overturned. And basically, this doctrine says that because graduate assistants are, they're students first and employees second, which means, you know, meaning there's two main components. One is that they're not real jobs, right? Like some version of this line, they're not real jobs because the graduate assistants are just financial assistants, or they're part of the training that graduate, us students need to move on. You've already heard Jason kind of speak about both of those, but I do want to add that, you know, in fall 2020, only 28% of graduate students were employed as graduate assistants at the University of Hawaii at Manoa, and at UH Hilo, it was only 2.43%. So it's not a necessary component of graduate student education, obviously, because this opportunity is not provided to all graduate students. And to the point that, you know, it's financial assistance, there are no benefits, including the tuition. including the tuition waiver, um, which are not offered to other employees of the university and, including faculty and staff who are, are allowed the right to unionize and collectively bargain. And then lastly, I just want to, um, touch on this point that, uh, the other part of the primarily students doctrine is-
I'm going to ask you to summarize, just maybe the interest of fairness.
Basically, uh, it, this does not, graduate student collective bargaining does not hurt the educational environment of the university. There's been several, um, academic peer-reviewed studies and, um, faculty at, like many large public, hundreds of faculty at large public universities, um, support, or they, they do not find that, um, the existence of collective bargaining agreements hurts their relationship with students or, or is detrimental or deleterious to their ability to provide graduate student education. And it is not a policy of the university to set standards for graduate student education. It is up to faculty, um, at department levels, so they set standards, um, for education. So yes, but I don't want to go on, but thank you for your, the chance to testify.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Members, are there any questions? Rep. Marioshi.
This is for the grad students, whoever you want to send up. So I've been poking around other state, uh, websites that do have grad student unions. What bargaining unit do they tend to be in? Cause I'm not finding any independent bargaining units in other states.
So it's interesting because, uh, the way Hawaii does collective bargaining units in terms of public labor, public bargaining units is not necessarily replicated in a lot of states or pretty unique in our system here. But you'll see that in many other universities or public university systems, they do have their own units. So for example, the University of California, um, graduate assistants are, you, I, I don't remember the exact local number, but they're in their own unions and units for collective bargaining purposes.
Okay, so they collectively bargain by themselves without any other professions mixed in?
Yes.
Is that true of a lot of other states, though, too?
Yes. It's the standard across just because of the uniqueness of the graduate assistant position. So we don't necessarily fit with faculty because they're our bosses and also, uh, we don't qualify for tenure or other things that are of major concerns to faculty contracts. Um, and we don't necessarily apply to or fit within some of the other white collar professional units within universities because our work is still educational in nature. We do still teach classes, we do still conduct research. We're not necessarily just of managing clerical work.
And I have one more other question, Chair, if other people want to. So last time in my committee, I asked you all a question about whether there's some objective standard we could apply that would give one set of workers reason to have a new bargaining unit. Do you have any thoughts on that at this point?
Well, I, my personal stance is, you know, workers need to, it need, the collective bargaining units need to make sense, but I guess in terms of this objective standard that you're talking about, um, one of the main issues that comes out in contract negotiation is the number of workers assigned to a unit depending on their job title. So if you have, let's say, um, let's, for example, you talked about EMTs and prison guards last time, you know, these are two very different working conditions and work titles. If one significantly outnumbers the other, when that bargaining is bargaining for a contract, the unit, the job title with more workers and, uh, is going to be catered to more often in order to approve the contract and the, um, interest of the lower number of the minority workers, um, may be overseen, or may get overlooked in terms of just trying to pass a contract and get it approved.
Wouldn't that be every single bargaining unit, though, unless they are exactly equal in numbers?
I mean, not necessarily. If, you know, certain units are, let's say, um, sorry, I'm trying to rack my brain for someone, but like, let's say teachers, um, you know, their, their contracts, their contracts, like, um, and HSA definitely can speak to this better than I can, but their contract priorities are going to be more similar than, let's say, our contract priorities compared to our fa, our, our faculty, um, priorities because we just, our working conditions are so different. And the needs that we need met in order to ensure a safe and productive workplace are different in terms of what kind of working conditions we work under and the standards of what we're trying to achieve.
Okay, that still seems a little subjective to me, though. But thank you for your thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you. I actually have a question for ILWU, Mr. Rodden. I've, I've seen you now shift, shift gears and hats. I know that we used to see you with Aluai, so you've been working on the issue for, for a long time.
Yeah.
Following up on Rep. Marioshi's question, if the, if the world doesn't work perfectly and we aren't able to get you folks your own bargaining unit, if this bill does move and, um, hopefully become law, where do you, where do you see a potential place?
Where, um, are you talking in terms of bargaining units under chapter eighty-nine dash six?
Yes.
So the ILWU's testimony is that this is an appropriate bargaining, bargaining unit, sixteen as proposed in this legislation is an appropriate bargaining unit. And appropriateness, uh, is not just like a rhetorical flourish in the HRS, it's, it's collective bargaining jargon that refers to whether or not the workers in that unit are going to be able to properly and effectively pursue their bargaining interest. And generally, what, uh, like a labor relations board, which is normally what we, so when the ILWU, uh, one four two represents private sector workers, and so when we are petitioning for a new unit, we're going before either the National Labor Relations Board or the Hawaii Labor Relations Board and proposing a new unit. And so one of the things that the labor board will look at is appropriateness. In other words, do the workers in that unit share a common bargaining interest? Are they more or less wanting the same things? Are they going to be on the same pay schedules, stuff like that? And then the other thing they look at is, are the workers who are not included in the proposed bargaining unit sufficiently distinct from the workers who are in the bargaining unit? So in other words, like, well, are there, in other words, if you were to be like, we're going to take half the grad students from the political science department and not the other half, the board would probably be like, well, what is, what is the actual difference here? And so it, when you look at chapter eighty-nine and the current appropriate units, um, let me just pull that up. Like, the, the, the only two that would be able to work based on the employer grouping are unit seven and eight. And it's been a long time since I've looked at a unit eight contract, but I think that trying to shove graduate assistants into a unit eight contract would fundamentally change the nature of the position. So you're, and, and the graduate assistants as academic personnel are closer to faculty. In fact, uh, even the, like, subclassifications for graduate assistants mirror the subclassifications for faculty. But there's significant distinct interest between faculty and graduate assistants. For one, even though faculty are non-supervisory, meaning the vast majority of their job doesn't involve supervising other employees, the faculty classification does have a primarily supervisory relationship with the graduate assistant classification. That's not unusual to see in, uh, collective bargaining, to have a non-supervisory class that, that has supervisor relationships with another non-supervisory class. But generally, a labor relations board would not find it appropriate to include them in the same bargaining unit. And then there are also distinct bargaining interests, uh, between faculty and graduate assistants that I think Kavenna touched on, things like tenure, tuition remission. Does that, does that answer the question?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we're going to move on to our final, um, measure today. It's HB eight seven six. And this bill would require the University of Hawaii to develop native pollinator habitats to be deployed on all campuses, uh, in the university system. First up to testify, we have, uh, Calvert Young, a university employee with comments.
Thanks, Chair. I'd like to, uh, just sum up the, the university's testimony. So we are actually supportive of this idea and we find it very, um, novel and interesting to pursue for academic reasons, um, and those are spelled out in our testimony. We have had discussions, uh, internally with, uh, within UH with the experts in these areas. And in terms of getting to a deliverable objective that we believe is achievable, we'd like to request that the committee and the legislature consider augmenting this, uh, proposal to think of it more as a pilot study and maybe shrink the target campuses into those, at least initially in those areas where we believe, we, the state of Hawaii and the university, can be successful in propagating, um, native plants and native pollinators and attracting them and helping them, uh, thrive and, and survive and sustain and grow that as a, as an academic enterprise. So that's the crux of our testimony. We do have people on, uh, that are on Zoom, uh, from UH Hilo, Rebecca Ostratag, and from UH Manoa, Daniel Rubenoff. They are both the experts in native plants and, uh, pollinators in these areas, and those are the two campuses that we would suggest, um, that the legislature consider pursuing as the initial pilot, uh, locations. And they are available to answer any technical questions. I'm not the pollinator expert, but they, they will be able to answer all your questions there. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony and for working on this. Members, are there any questions? This is, that was our only testifier in person. I'm sorry, we have an additional four individuals offering testimony, written testimony in support. Is there anyone else who'd like to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? Rep. Martin.
For, um, our online, um, expert, I think Daniel Rubenoff, they said he was on there. I'm wondering, um, given that the UH campus system are already arboretums, do they already, would they already be considered pollinating, pollinators? Would they already qualify or some campuses already qualify?
Yeah, that's an interesting question. The difference being, uh, the arboretum here is probably most famous for its exotic collection. Uh, there are plants from around the world that are difficult to see in other places, but to have a native pollinator, uh, essentially ecosystem, even a mini ecosystem here, is something that hasn't been done. And it means more than just having, uh, a specimen plant, even of a native plant, but actually tying them together, uh, and having multiple different species of native plants that native pollinators can respond to and, uh, develop multiple sort of, uh, ecological connections. So that's something that doesn't exist. And, uh, it would be only through a bill like this and a concerted effort, and honestly, through a bit of research first, because we're not even a hundred percent sure how to do that on the campus, uh, that we could go forward with this. But it's a really exciting idea. And if we could do it, I think it could be contagious and spread beyond the university, hopefully to the public and actually do a lot of good, not just educationally, but environmentally.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? Seeing none, we're going to recess for decision-making. Reconvening for decision-making.
Uh, thank you, Chair, thank you, members. Vice Chair recommends, um, moving HB three seven one. We're going to defect the date. Um, and then we also need to amend sections three fifty-six D dash eleven to, um, to amend the definition of broadband infrastructure and broadband service. So we're going to insert a new section two into the bill for this purpose, and then we're going to re-number the subsections based on that. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Chair for the vote.
Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, uh, HB three seven one. Chair and vice chair vote aye. Rep. Martin.
Aye.
Rep. Martinez.
Aye.
Rep. Marioshi.
Aye.
Rep. Quinlin.
Excused.
Rep. Todd.
Aye.
Uh, Rep. Woodson.
Aye.
Rep. Garcia, excused. Chair, your recommendation has been adopted.
Thank you, Chair. Moving on to HB two five eight. Vice Chair's recommendation is to pass. We're just going to defect the date. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Chair for the vote.
Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, HB two five eight. Chair and vice chair, oh, seeing, uh, all members are present, with the exception of Rep. Quinlin and Rep. Garcia, uh, Chair and vice chair vote aye. Are there any noes or reservations? Seeing none, uh, Vice Chair, your recommendation, your recommendation has been adopted.
Thank you, Chair, back to you.
Thank you. Any of these mine?
Yes.
Oh. Okay. 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 On HB eight seven four HD one, um, Chair's recommendation is to amend the language in section one to strike article eight and replace that language with article ten. And that's the only change we'll be making. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote? Sorry.
Yeah, I, I still have concerns about this bill. I mean, I know I'm being a little bit of a broken record here. I, I don't think that a clear objective standard has been laid as to why the, anyone needs a different bargaining unit at this point, let alone the grad students. I do have concerns, though, about how the grad students are being treated, and I'm glad that UH is here to address this, and I have spoken with UH on the side about addressing some of these things. Uh, the grievance process definitely needs an overhaul, it's about as old as I am. Things like sick leave, things like overwork, I think these are, are issues that the university, as a university, should be fixing for its students because grad students, all sides admit, are students first. So with that, I will be going with reservations, but I will be also committing to working with UH and the grad students to fixing some of these problems with or without this bill. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Rep. Marioshi. Are there any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB eight seven- Voting on HB 874, HD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye, noting the excused absences of Representatives Quinlin and Garcia, and the reservations from Representative Marioshi. Members, are there any other reservations or noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. On HB 875, HD1, my recommendation is to pass this out as is. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 875, HD1, Chair's recommendation is to... Thank you. Is to pass as is. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye, noting the excused absences of Representatives Quinlin and Garcia. Members, are there any other reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. On our final bill, HB 876, HD1, I'd like to amend the purpose statement in Section 1 to read as follows. The purpose of this, the purpose of this measure is to support the revitalization of native pollinators by requiring the University of Hawaii to develop and implement a two-year native pollinator habitat pilot project to be executed at UH Manoa and UH Hilo. Section 2, there shall be established a two-year pollinator habitat pilot project to be developed and implemented on those two campuses, and we would be providing a blank appropriation to fund one full-time equivalent technician position, student help, and supplies. So, in the committee report, I'd like to note that the estimated cost for these resources would be about $150,000 per site. Members, are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 876, HD1, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting the excused absences of Representatives Quinlin and Garcia. Members, are there any, or sorry, reservations or noes? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. We are adjourned.